All right, go ahead and call me to order Henderson City Council Wednesday, January 15th at 1:00 PM. We're looking for motion in the minutes.
It's removed.
Okay, second. Okay, second on the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, all right. Yeah, let's see. Police chief, come on up.
Ready?
All right, just, uh, just for your awareness, because this is your first meeting.
Sure.
If you've gone five minutes, we've done something wrong. So...
Just saying, it's a quick process.
Don't talk too much.
It might be a little bit longer, actually.
Okay. What problems do you have for us?
Uh, um, kind of everybody.
Where is it?
We're important, see if you can pass it off.
Oh, man. I got a sore neck, I'm just not doing very well tonight.
All righty. So, um, I looked at the calls for service from December 1st through January 15th today's date, and we had fifty-six calls for service resulting into arrests. And I kind of broke it down, so we had three domestic calls, three thefts. Um, one was narcotic-related, one search warrant. Thirteen traffic stops, two animal complaints, two parking violations, I misspelled it. Uh, thirteen assists other agencies, it could be the sheriff's office, it could be ambulance, it could be fire department, those are, or, you know, other, other state patrol. Fourteen community police-related calls, three public assistance, the other calls were infamational and found property. Currently, we're already working, since I got here, on a narcotic case and burglar case. I can't disclose any, you know, since ongoing investigation, we've already started doing some stuff, so... Uh, as far as personnel, uh, we have currently, uh, five part-time officers. Alex Schmidt, Sean Behini, Brett Lawler, Ian Ott. And just recently, I was approached by Jesse, uh, Dawson, and, uh, he, uh, worked here, but he never put his resignation, so he's still in the books, basically, here. So, he just kind of stopped working for a while because he went to another agency. But we still have him on the books, he's still, you know, listed as an employer, part-time employer with us. So, um, you know, I figured, um, you know, I asked around, and we didn't have any problems with him while he was working here, so, um, you know, the more the merrier. Uh, obviously, we have a very small part-time budget. Uh, currently, we hold post licenses with officers Schmidt and Lawler. Um, they are current on their licenses. The budget allows us hundred-and-five hours a month, and, uh, which would be approximately twenty-six hours a week for part-timers. And, uh, I'm kind of evaluating the caseload, when we most likely to come out. And, uh, there are certain things that the community wants us to do here, like bar checks and, uh, you know, closing shell station, and, you know, just checking businesses downtown, so, I'm just trying to see, you know, what would be the best way to utilize our, hours to provide better coverage for the city. How can we maximize them? If I come out at certain times, there's nothing going on, do we really need to be there? You know, a little going on, I'd rather concentrate on the times where you have more activity and more likely to get any calls. I mean, obviously, you know, we're twenty-four-seven, and at any time, we can get a call, but for, for the most time, just trying to kind of see what times. And, you know, I, uh, I'll probably talk about, about it in the next meeting, it's been only two weeks since I've been here, but, you know, I already have some ideas.
Good.
And I have to provide better coverage for us and utilize our manpower.
Excellent.
So, um, uh, as far as equipment and supplies, we have two units. One is a new one, it's only got, uh, eight thousand nine eighty-two miles, all changes due in about a thousand miles, it's in a good working condition. Uh, we have other unit, the top unit, which actually wasn't working when I got here. Uh, there were some minor repairs, Dante got to it, you know, there was nothing major, so, uh, we were able to get it fixed. It's not going to cost a lot of money, and it's a fairly decent running unit. Uh, it's got seventy-six thousand seven ninety-five miles on it, the next oil change is about two, two thousand miles. Currently, I am using this vehicle on a trial basis, taking it home to La Sure. And the reason behind it, I don't really care, and it's, you know, up to you all whether I have a take-home unit or not, yeah. But I think that in case I have to come out, um, I don't have to go stop at the garage, switch to the, you know, get a unit and go back and directly go to, and, you know, of course, I'm not going to be using it for my personnel, that's, you know, just going back and forth from work. Actually, Dan at the shop said that this vehicle should, you know, it's been sitting for so long, and that's where the problems came, that it's been not utilized for so long, that it was, you know, minor things, but it wasn't working, so, you know, it kind of needs to be driven. Uh, at least once, so, but then again, as I said, it's up to you, Mary and the councilman, you know, to decide, you know, whether that's, that's a good idea. I think it is.
Yeah, Lon and I talked about it a little bit, and, you know, putting some minds on it, not a big deal, and, you know, if, as long as he's using it for being on call, I mean, him hopping into the second squad and responding is certainly going to be faster than a, a deputy. Yeah. To be anywhere in the county, so, on, on that basis, that seemed like a pretty good idea, you know, certainly would save us some money, you know, for the gas that we would spend, um, it's going to be cheaper than, you know, having the sheriff show up and have him bill it, so, um, but, uh...
And more importantly, not having to stop and get a squad car, just going directly to whatever has to happen, because it could be an emergency.
So, anything else to add to that, or, and so, you know, yeah, makes sense.
We have two radios, uh, they're both in good working condition. Uh, we have two cell phones, one of which is, they both work, but one, Larry's like a flip phone. I think, uh, you know, I'll look into it, we'll probably get like smartphone, I think, uh, you know, we're kind of like in the way from flip phones, so...
Yep. If you can't run it, call Chesky, let Chesky run it, maybe.
Actually, Bruce sent me, uh, sent me a deck, and I couldn't, like, really figure out how to, you know, so I got a port part of the deck, so...
Chesky moved right behind you, you told me that, that's right. Feel it, uh, there we go.
I did some evaluation of what we need for, as far as supplies, police supplies for day-to-day operations, and there was no evidence packaging whatsoever, so, uh, we're getting that, uh, we did have any uniform patches, uh, these are the old patches, and, you know, I could find, so, uh, those are arriving. Squad computer software needs to be updated. So, that computer, I was trying to log in yesterday, and a thing popped up. It's, uh, Windows 7, and it says, starting January fourteenth, 2020, Microsoft is no longer supporting Windows 7. So, uh, if, if it crashes, it's not good, you know, so we, we kind of need to update it. I'm getting quotes from different, uh, people that could get us that software and see who, who is cheaper. Uh, speaking of the patches, I have, I also had two quotes, and I tried to keep it local with our Evolution shirts, however, Strikers, which is kind of like main police supply store in Indianapolis and Polaria, um, the quote was, hundred-and-seventy dollars less with Strikers. So, uh, I'm just kind of...
What was the total?
The total was two thirty-seven fifty, four fifty batches with Strikers, and three ninety-seven fifty for with Evolution shirts. So, it wasn't even close, and it's like two thirty-seven, then three ninety-seven.
Yeah.
I tried to keep it local, but...
No, that's fine, did you swing back through Evolution to say, hey, this is what I got from Strikers? Is there anything you can do to sharpen the pencil?
They not, they, they have to order from somebody else.
Oh, okay.
So, they go through a third party, then, so I don't think that would have been, you know, like, because that's what...
Okay.
...was started. All right, so, other, I ordered some narcotic identification kits, we, the, the department didn't have any at all. Taser holster, we need that, um, I'm just looking at different sizes right now and comparing prices.
Do we have a taser right now?
We have a taser, but we don't have a holster. Alex bought his own holster and using it, but it's not a department holster, so, uh, we kind of have to have...
Do we have just one taser?
One taser yet for everybody. I mean, I would like to get two, but I guess we can get by with one for now. We still need to purchase all of this supplies, so, uh, I would not, I'd say taser is not a problem, we have one at least, so... There are no ID cards for, uh, members, no credentials for members of the police department. Uh, when I went to buy my gun, they asked me, where are your credentials? You know, kind of pull up my badge, you know, but, uh, we need to get them, so...
Didn't work?
No, it did work, but, I mean, the guy, but, but, yeah.
Okay.
Police badge doesn't make you a policeman, your credentials do, so, so ideas, so that, um, right now, I'm working with La Sure, with Bruce, and, uh, see if who can help, he can help me out, I'm waiting for them to contact me, uh, it may not cost us anything, but I would like to see what quality of ID also they have. Otherwise, Sheriff's Office utilizes instant card, it's about ten dollars, very high-quality ID card, hologram and everything else, so it's not going to cost us that much to get, you know, five, six IDs for, for the department. Other thing that department didn't have, nobody had the uniform department emails, so I said it a lot, at least now we kind of look like, you know, we all say, and it's not Yahoo and Gmail and the other one, you know, it's all kind of the same, similar, which has had a some PD in it, so...
Okay.
Another very important thing that this department lacks is complete policies and procedures. Uh, and, uh, why is that important? Because, uh, policies and procedures got to outline expectation on how we handle different types of calls, how we're supposed to conduct ourselves, how we're supposed to interact with general public, and, uh, what we're supposed, and how we're supposed to wear our uniform, you know, there's a lot, it's, it's a very, and, uh, right now, we don't have it, so, I'm writing those. I was actually reviewing policies and procedures for more as police departments, so it's, it's not, it's not a problem, it's going to be done as a little bit of, uh, you know, I have, I have policies and procedures for two different police departments, and I'm looking for it, and I'm just trying to kind of make it helpful here, so...
Right, that sounds good.
So, so that's, that's what I have, and, uh, um, other than that, I met with all of them, I spoke with all of the members of our police department, we have, we're going to have a department meeting. I talked to city attorney, county attorney, uh, members of the sheriff's office, and introduced myself around, talked to all the business owners, went to school meeting at our high school.
Open house?
No, no, just general...
No, no, tell, when you're, when you're going to have your open house?
Oh, yeah, yeah, open house, yeah, open house, so, um, I would like to have kind of meet-the-chief type of deal here at the city hall on the weekend of February first, second, you know, I haven't decided yet, um, but, uh, you know, that, I think that would be good for everybody, just to come, talk to me, and...
Sounds good.
Yourself, you know, and talk to everybody in town.
All right.
Come, come by.
Try to get as many part-timers as you can.
I will try to get as many part-timers, so...
Yeah, I'm going to get people, seeing them probably, you know?
Yeah, that's true. And that's why, uh, you know, I said I was going to be settled Sunday, I just put out email, uh, asking them what day we'd work, and we'll see how many part-timers I can get, so... I don't know, I think this is it, this is it for it.
Awesome, wow, that's thorough, trust me.
It's been more than five minutes, I apologize, but...
No, no, that's all right, we'll, we'll let the first one slide.
Why am I spending money, and...
Yeah, no, it's good.
I mean, you can't get by without evidence supplies, you can't get by without, you know, it's so, it seems like...
Yeah, no, that sounds good. So, you want to have any questions for the chief?
I think it's better to give us more than less, you know?
Yeah.
No problem with that.
Well, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Stay warm, by the way.
What's that?
Stay warm.
Yeah.
Okay, did you drive the, the backup squad today? Is that why it's out here, or?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, all right, thanks, I saw it, oh, all right. Cool, thank you. All right, uh, what's that?
Thank you.
Oh, please, yeah, just put your...
At this point, you know, who knows how it's going to settle in, but he's switching up his time, you know, basically, he'll be here, he's here during the day this week most of the time, and then he'll go home and do some stuff, and we're back to La Sure, and then come back, you know?
Okay.
So, I guess he'll, he'll keep experimenting around for hours to see what works and stagger things, and, you know, do whatever. Now, can't, I don't think, we won't expect him here every day at ten, or ten or eleven o'clock, but some days he will be here, and then some days he won't be, you know, on his workload and whatever's going on.
Makes sense to me.
When I reviewed the hours, I thought it was a good setup, and it...
Good, excellent.
Yeah, basically, basically, he's got his benchmark of hundred-and-seventy-eight, a hundred-and-seventy-some hours a month, and then he'll figure it in, you know, each pay period might not be uniform, but he'll just, he'll figure it out and figure it in, and once he gets his part timer just lined up, and whatever, then we'll just go and then see how it works, and, you know, Rob will keep reviewing it.
Perfect. Okay, all right, Debbie, David, Blacktop, Bill, Kirk, come on up.
Good evening. First of all, I want to thank the city council, Henderson, have us on board here tonight, see if we can get this behind us. I guess what I'd like to share is, um, you know, how we got to this point, why I'm here this evening, and, um, if I may proceed?
Yeah, bet.
Okay, the project we're discussing, obviously, is over here on Mill Street and Sixth, and, that project was designed by INS Group, it had a substantial completion date of June twentieth, twenty eighteen. We did meet the substantial completion date, as per the contract documents. At that time, uh, INS Group came out with a punch list, which had a few minor issues that we needed to correct, um, upon the final inspection, and those issues were, um, items one through four, remove sediment gravel from all sidewalks, cutters, and streets, remove and replace all dead and brownings sod, remove all bituminous pavement from anthracastings and valve box lids, and then remove our sediment control logs, which is the, uh, best management practices for erosion control. And then there was a small washout area along the south side of Mill Street that was repaired at that time. Those punch list items were completed, uh, on or about August sixth. Upon completion of that, um, the final payment was prepared and signed on October seventeenth, two thousand eighteen. Okay, on August fifteenth, city council met, and at that time, the only issue that was brought up was the issue of this dying and brown sod on various portions of the project. It was agreed at that time, and a change order was written to give a credit back to the city in the amount of, uh, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars, or something along those lines. So, that's how that sod issue was handled, that was the only outstanding issue, um, in two thousand eighteen. This project, under the project special conditions, has a one-year warranty period from substantial completion. Based on a substantial completion date of June twentieth, twenty eighteen, that would mean our substantial completion ended June twentieth, twenty nineteen. Okay, that's the summary of the contract and the, uh, events that, uh, you know, went on in two thousand eighteen. Now, we were contacted, um, on August twenty-seventh via email, um, and at that time, we learned of a few issues that the city was still wrestling with internally. Um, one being the drain tile that, uh, was believed by, uh, individuals, whether they were city council members or city residents, not sure, but they believed that we had possibly disturbed that drain tile during construction. I told Lon, I said, yes, I said, we, you know, we need to take a look at this, I, you know, I feel that, uh, you know, we need to put this behind us as well. I agreed to come up here with, uh, jet, Jetter Vac, um, and jet that line, and upon that procedure, it was discovered that the line was plugged with beer bottles, pop cans, a lot of lime scale and lime sludge, just because of the leaching of the groundwater coming out of that hillside. We were able to jet the entire line all the way up underneath the concrete steps that go up to the church, which is also the last intake on that line. So, that was done in good faith, but it was also an item that Lon and I had discussed, if it was determined that it was not our issue, that it would be compensable. And I did send a invoice to the city, and that was paid. Um, during, also during this August twenty-seventh correspondence, um, there was a, a mention of a hump at the intersection of Sixth and Mill Street. Not really sure what's driving that concern. Here again, we're outside of our contract limits as far as, uh, completion dates and warranty dates. Uh, the hump, I'm not sure if that's a safety concern, or just what's driving that, that concern, but, uh, in our opinion, in our professional opinion, there is nothing there that we see that impedes traffic, uh, and in essence, we feel that the way the street was constructed, it has better drainage to the catch bases that were installed, it's not all simply coming down the hill and then running through that intersection, uh, down to ninety-three or over to ninety-nine. There was also a, uh, comment that was made about some washing on Mill Street, I'm not sure what that, what's driving that as well, um, whether that's washing of the bituminous surface, the rather deteriorated bituminous surface that's there, um, but that's something that I'm not familiar with. Here again, that is off the project limits, and, uh, I guess our opinion is, is that street, uh, should be on your hit list as far as, uh, future repairs, that street is in terribly bad condition.
I had to follow up, I'm the one who made the comment, and I think it's actually at your, uh, the stuff that you guys did, because I, I walk past that every day, and, I know what condition Mill Street is in, I wouldn't have made the comment without seeing. It was on the stuff that, um, you have an apron coming down, basically, I don't know if that's the technical term for it, but where you're, it's in between where your blacktop is and the bituminous surface.
Uh, you're talking on this Mill Street erosion?
Top of Mill Street.
Okay.
Very top of Mill Street, like where you're, I was concerned because it wasn't the stuff that you guys laid down.
Are you talking about, like, on the corner of Orange's Lot there?
Between Orange's Lot and Tim's house that he rents.
Okay.
So, basically, if you had, if you walked across between the two sidewalks, you'd see it in there, you know, I can see it right now, I don't think, because, because of the snow, so...
So, he's talking on the east side of the hump, of that hump that we're talking about?
Okay.
Running, running north to south.
Right, north, south, like over in the curb radiuses?
No, right in the middle.
In the middle of the street?
Well, of Mill Street or of...
Mill Street, basically, where Mill and, it's pretty close to where Mill and Sixth, I'm going through my head, I'm going through my head right now, seeing it probably lasted November, but it was on, it's, it's... Again, I wouldn't be concerned about Mill Street if it was the old Mill Street, I would be looking at what, looking at new.
It's like the transition?
Yeah, it's before the transition, I think. Basically, looking at it and saying...
A little bit on, a little bit to the east of that, of the, of the transition or swell, or whatever you want to call it?
Correct.
Okay, and I, you know, when we stood out there that day in that intersection, that wasn't brought up, and I don't know, we didn't look at it, so I, I can't speak to that. My impression was it was on Mill Street itself, but it's...
No, I mean, Mill, Mill Street would be, I, I walk down and up and around Mill Street all the time, I, Mill Street is Mill Street.
And just as a sidebar to the Mill Street portion, you know, like I said, that was off our project. We had our own, uh, efforts, and, and in good faith with the city of Henderson, we did set the favor down when we were in here, and we smeared some hot mix in to try to patch those dilaminated areas, I mean, that was just something that we felt...
The reason I brought it up is just that, and, and maybe it's as much for us to be aware of as you, but if, if that's there, it's only going to keep getting...
So, what you're talking about is a, is a potential, is there some bituminous failure on the new work?
That's what I'm talking about.
Okay.
And again, we could, if we could go out there, and, and right now, I'd go out there and show you right where I'm seeing it, but we're not going to see it.
And regardless, you're saying it's beyond the warranty period?
Well, that's what I'm saying, but, you know, here again, folks, I guess the whole idea is, first of all, we want to be able to close this project out, we want to be able to receive our, uh, payment, get this job behind us, and we, as a company, we like working for the city of Henderson, we've been up here a number of times, and we'd like to continue that relationship. Now, if there is a bituminous failure, yeah, it's outside the warranty period and all the rest of it, but I'm certainly willing to chase up here this spring and take a look at it with you guys, and see if there's a, you know, and, and hey, it's for our benefit as well, we're hot mix asphalt producers, if we have an issue, we need to know about those things. And, but is it, it sounds like it's an isolated... Okay?
Give you an idea.
Okay?
It's just one of those things that I think it's going to come up, my, in my, just looking at it, I think the way the water drains off of that, off of what we're talking about in that hump, I think it's just going to keep shooting right across there, and it's going, it, I think, that's just, you know much more about this than I do.
Just for yours, Jim lives right across the street from where the fire...
You guys, you guys put the sidewalk in front of my house.
Right, right across the street from the church. Went uphill, yeah, 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 okay, okay, good. No!
What is the outstanding amount on this bill?
Do you have it?
Yeah, I do, I do.
So, I was wondering that, I got a question for the council. Um, I, I seem to remember the, uh, the hump being an issue like the month it was finished, and then, and then also, when you get up to the top, that turned being, um, a little different, a little bit more out into the intersection that used to be there. In any case, um, if I'm mis, if I'm misremembering that, let me know, or...
Randy brought it up, I don't know if we ever followed up.
I don't think we ever followed up. Randy brought it up, we have never followed up.
Well, I think, I think yes, I asked you to follow up.
We asked IG to follow up.
Did, did ISG not follow up?
In a timely manner, especially.
Well, because I, I, like I said, I thought I remember, you know, Randy, you know, feeling like he was going to take flight, you know, like that first month.
I think Randy, uh, I think Randy directed his comments at Cory, and was very pointed in his comments to Cory.
Yeah, and so that Cory didn't advance them to WW, is what you're saying?
Yeah, this, like I say, August twenty-seventh of this year was the first I learned of it. Yeah, this, like I say, August 27th of this year was the first I learned of it.
Well, and Cory isn't here to talk.
Right, and we're not here to throw anybody under the bus either, by any fashion.
No, no, but we need to know.
You do.
So.
But it looks, it looks like the final application, this is payback number two, which was the final application, $5,670.62.
That's with the $400 deductible?
That is with the $400, this is after all change orders, change orders one, two, and three.
I too would not mind getting this off the books with the, with the audit coming in and...
No, I agree in...
I gotta say, we've thrown more money than this at ISG on this issue.
Yeah, probably. Yeah, so I'm fine with it, and Randall Randy probably had the biggest issue with it, and he's not here, so I can't speak for him either. So I'm going to have to defer to you.
I'm, the only thing that I can see, we talked about the, we talked about the hump that did go to Cory and leave the comment. I mean, Randy's comments were very pointed at Cory that night. I don't, you know, if it never went back to these guys, I would have, I would have a hard time not closing this out, right?
I was not on council that night.
Right. But I mean, I remember the conversation that went to Cory. Other than the hump, which everybody talks about.
But your, but your, but your opinion, the hump, while it may be, it's not a, it's not a safety...
I don't see that as a safety concern by any fashion. I mean, but here again, I'm not going to take liability for your drivers in the vicinity of your, you know, your fair city here. The posted speed limit on city streets here is what?
Thirty.
Thirty? And if you're going 30 coming up that hill, it's plenty fast anyway. But I watched cars here this evening before we came into this meeting, and I've seen them traverse very nicely through that transition. I'm not seeing any...
But also with the point that if, that that hump does serve some purpose as far as drainage?
It does, it does. It directs the water into those catch bases. Otherwise, the fear was that the water was just going to come right on downhill and then shoot right, right?
Fast.
Well, shoot down Mill and then keep right on it going north.
And I don't deny, I agree a few on that capacity. And we can't deny that we, we know we have a drainage issue in the city as far as like the failure goes, and, and the hump.
All right, you got a motion there, Jim?
I'll motion.
All right. Yeah, you've got a second.
To close this out.
Close second.
All right, motion, second. You for the conversation? Yes, I do. We will, it sounds like we're going to pay this, but it sounds like you also said you'll come out this spring.
I will. Lon and I talk, you're still going to be the city clerk this spring?
Part of it, I don't know.
Well, I hope you are. So...
We'll see.
It's later on in the agenda. You guys want, I mean, since I've, since I've already brought it up when it comes to that time, I'll be willing to set up a time to show you what I'm saying. If I'm wrong, I'll buy it.
I've certainly, like I say, Lon and I have worked together for years, and will certainly come up and take a look at it.
All right, you got a motion, second, or a fix, say aye?
Aye.
All right, bill is going to be paid. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ironically, ISG, not Cory, come on up.
Cory who? He's like, "I don't know Cory."
All right.
You're right, I'm not Cory. I'm stepping in here tonight, I'm Kyle Renneke. Thanks for having me here.
This is the email that I sent out, Jeff Monde, the proposal.
Yep, so I don't know if that made it in the packet, but I have a few copies, if you'd like to see that again.
By the way, the chief of police took active time, so.
Oh.
But even more brief than...
But he's new.
Oh, good. He's good, yes.
The new priority to get us out by eight o'clock every...
Here, no, 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 give him that one. Give that one.
All right, so I guess the, if you don't mind me getting going, or, I don't know if there's any questions, or, all right, well...
Right to the graph.
Yeah, well, that's on my end, I guess, here, but the reason I'm here tonight is because Lon called us in December here and asked if we could meet up and talk about the sanitary sewer system and some of the drainage issues or INI issues that seemingly are occurring right now with the merp puck dissolving. I think it was a good time for Lon to just to look at what some of those sanitary flows were and what some of the costs are associated with that, and if there's any way to help improve, whether it's the pumping or the INI or some of these other issues in town. So we sat down with Lon and Robin, and we talked about a few different ideas we had. And one thing that, I guess initially, in the packet, I think everybody understands what INI is, it's clear water, whether it's rainwater or groundwater, getting into the sanitary sewer system pipes. So once it's in that sanitary sewer system, it gets treated at the sewer treatment plant, and the city's paying for that treatment to happen, and this is water that doesn't necessarily need to be treated. Like I said, it's rainwater, it's groundwater that's infiltrating into the system. The graph I have here, which is maybe a little bit bigger version is easier to see, is a pretty good way to demonstrate what, what's actually happening here. So Lon gave us the sanitary sewer flow, monthly flow data, that the city is pumping over to the sewer and being treated. The yellow flat line you see on the graph is the amount of water, of treated water that's being used from the water tower or the well. The green bars above it are the sanitary sewer water that's being pumped to the sewer and being treated. So you can see that the yellow line is the maximum amount of fresh water that the city could use, and typically, you use 100 gallons, you have to treat somewhere in that range. And here, we're showing that the amount of water that's being treated is sometimes around that water usage line, but sometimes up to four or five times as much. So in those times where the city's pumping that exorbitant amount of water over to the sewer be treated, we're taking a look at, the blue line is monthly rainfall data, and the red line is the river level data, the river level heights. So we can correlate some of these really high infiltration water with, when the river is very high, we're seeing a lot of inflow or infiltration, or when the rain, when rain events happen, we're seeing a lot of this inflow and infiltration, showing there is an issue with the sanitary sewer system, the pipes. Whether it's cracks in the pipe, roots growing into it, maybe some pump lines being connected and pumping into the sanitary sewer and different things like that.
Can I pause you just for one second?
Yeah, yep.
So in terms of our agreement, do you know off the top of your head where the line is for our allowable, the translation for our allowable, what we're going to send over? Because it's going to step down over the next three years or whatever it is. Do you know where that falls on this graph?
Yeah.
Two fifty, so two fifty...
Two hundred fifty thousand gallons a day, which is...
A day.
Right around that yellow line.
Since we have this monthly, maybe do it quick.
So you have two fifty by thirty.
Yeah.
So thirty million?
Two fifty, that's the...
Two fifty per day by thirty.
Yeah, that is the, the last step or the first step?
What do you mean?
Right, because it steps down.
Yeah, so we're allowed...
Oh, yeah, that's, that's, that's what we're adding here.
That's where it's supposed to be next year?
This year, this, right now, yep. So what's, what's two fifty, what is it?
You said two hundred...
Two hundred fifty thousand per day by thirty.
That's 7.5 million, but that'd be pretty...
No, that's what it's supposed to be.
Yeah, because we knew we'd been over a lot.
All right, then what's the next year?
Two hundred.
I'm going to keep having you do the math, Kyle. You're the engineer, you're smart.
That's six million?
Okay, so that starts in 2021, okay? And then the last one?
One sixty-eight.
One sixty-eight, what's that?
Uh, just over five million.
Okay. All right, so everyone, go ahead, right there between that four and six, draw a line all the way across. That is our goal.
And that's so ridiculous, right? Like if you think about our maximum pumping capacity being the yellow line, yeah, it's like, that should be so doable.
But what it says...
The one, this, this is, that's two fifty, that's the max. Our, so that, that yellow line is, is higher than what we actually pump.
Right.
Eighty-one is what we pump. So, so actually, you take that, take that yellow line...
No, that, that's, this is monthly, yeah.
Okay, okay, you got it?
So that yellow line is relative to...
That's the maximum.
The one we just drew.
So, so the yellow line is eighty-one by thirty? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and so that one we just all drew there between four and six is if we don't solve this, we, you know, we've given ourselves motivation to have to, essentially.
Essentially, that's the whole, whole point of this, we got to do it.
Yeah, 100%, so, okay, thank you.
Otherwise, we just give the sewer money at this point.
Yeah, well, it's a good exercise to see where things fall on here, so.
So if you can't do that, you tell us that.
The tough part about that is until, you know, it's, it's never going to be a perfect system, you know, your pipes, there's always going to be some amount of leakage, and to actually be able to quantify it, it's going to take some work and some projects to, to make some fixes. And I think the goal of what we're here talking about tonight is just to start getting a handle on where the biggest issues in the system are and how, what kind of approach can we take to, whether it's replacing pipes or coming up with some other solutions to, to fix some of these issues. Obviously, right now, you look at it, it's a, it's a monetary thing, and, you know, we have to get below this line for pumping, but another way to look at it too is that if we are having this much infiltration and inflow, our pipes might be failing, we might need to do patching or replacements or things like that too, not just the pumping costs. There's more, more to it than just that, so.
What is, what is an acceptable level of INI? Like what would you see in, I mean, surely we obviously have elevation issues, and this very closely follows our elevation issues, it's so low.
Yeah, that's, it definitely should be much closer to our max output than where we're at right now. There's also the magic number related...
I mean, other towns are doing this, what, is it like a 110% is typical? Like, like you'd be like, you know, say, say you went to the city of Eagle Lake, right, and they're like, "We want to do this project," and they're at 110%. What is that percent where you feel guilty, like, "I can't really help you because you're doing pretty good"?
You know, I, I mean, I think that 10% overage isn't a bad number. I don't know offhand what that overage number is, but like I said, every city, their treatment plant usage might be different too. There might be industrial areas that have their own well, so they might have, other than just a city well, contributing to it too. So there are a number of different factors there in what we typically see, but we could, we could definitely take a look at a few surrounding cities or similar type cities to see what we could expect to get down to or hope to get down to.
Yeah, that'd be good.
And the, you know, the initial thought at taking a look at this map is, is, are there any telltale signs on here of what the contributing factor is? And you can see with the red line going up and down, it follows very closely to our sanitary sewer green, treated water in those months. So there are a couple spikes in the blue line, which is a rainfall, that don't match the, the green sanitary sewer usage. It's hard to see on a monthly basis that how that rainfall works because a rainfall is a one-day kind of thing. So if we were to get into this, we'd probably take a look at this every day to say, is it a rainfall thing, or are there a whole bunch of roof leaders and storm drains that are hooked up to the sanitary sewer by mistake? Or is it mostly a river thing and we have groundwater issues coming in?
Possible that we have some sort of major failure that occurred in here.
I mean, there certainly could be something like that happening. I think in these higher river level times, it's especially important to take a look at some of the manholes and some of the pumping station and things down around the levee area. Just what we're seeing with this graph, I think what we've discussed, what I've talked with, when we met here last, was with Brian and with Uma, who you may be recognized from some other meetings, but the discussion is that obviously down in this low land within the levee area, that's the highest priority as we see this water going up and down drastically with the river level.
Yeah, I see.
So what we were suggesting in the study is that Lon had talked about doing some sanitary sewer, the televising of the pipes, so sending a camera up, televising the pipes to take a look at the condition, can we see any water coming in, or roots or cracked areas or blockages somewhere? And then taking a look at all of that, that data, and then we also included one other line in there for us to take, to do sanitary manhole inspections. Is it an old leaky brick manhole that's, that's letting a whole bunch of water in, or are they all in good shape? So be taking, initially taking a look at all of that, and then ranking all of sanitary sewer pipes based on their condition and their age, and putting together a spreadsheet or, like I said, a ranking system and a heat map saying, these couple blocks or these couple neighborhoods are the really high priority areas to take a look at, and associating a few costs with those. So that then we can say, okay, what's our highest priority project that we have to make some fixes here in town? What are maybe some possible funding sources that we could use, whether it's if there are any types of grants or maybe just loans that we use, low interest loans for city-type projects? And then, you know, how to move forward with that.
If, so right now, last month, well, we met with you guys and we met with representatives from SBA last month, they were here doing their thing. If you, if you guys were selected to do this, who would be, who would be your work team that would do it?
It'd be myself. It would be depending on what level of field work, like manual inspections, we'd have some survey or field staff that would help out, and it would be Uma and Brian, keeps a pretty close eye on everything too. And then we have a number of staff in some of our other offices that have done, you know, does, well, both in our current office, we, we work with Redwood Falls, I was just out there a couple weeks ago with an INI-type project with one of our other engineers, Chris Larson. So we could bounce a few ideas off him that with some current projects that he's doing with some other kind of...
So Cory would not be involved, right?
Could be, but that wouldn't be part of the current team.
You laugh.
I thought you were joking, I'm sorry.
No, no, I was dead serious, because I know that's a concern of another council person.
That's a good point.
And, and so I figured I'd ask on that person's behalf.
Might as well get that out there.
Yeah, if it's a concern, we're certainly willing to do whatever with it.
Okay.
Tim Walsh will say it's an earmark a bunch of money just for this. Is that money that's like been bonded, that people have been bonding for? Is that money that is possibly available for the...
Oh, the free money that they're handing out, yeah, I saw that.
The governor said that you wanted earmark a bunch of money specifically for water infrastructure.
Yes, I saw that, yeah.
Okay, and so I'm wondering, do you have any idea, was this money that, like us, we had already come, people had already come begging for, or is this money available?
You know, I wondered the exact same thing, because I saw that, I was like, "What's that all for?"
Right, it's like perfect timing, if it's not already...
Right. I'm sure, you know, it's already spoken for by cities who already think they need it, like big ones like Maconato and the metro. But, because those are the big dollar ones that, that are on the list.
The one thing that helps to reinforce the city's, I guess, point in that is having a study like this and having some, some maps and some direct numbers and saying, we're taking a look at the data, we know what projects we want to do, here's what's, here's our next step, we have something on the table, versus going to and saying, "We think we have an issue, we're seeing some things." So having, like I said, this type of, this type of deal would definitely help with that funding discussion.
And so for you tonight, you're, you're just proposing just the study?
Yeah.
And then for us, then we'd have a hard stop as to after the study, what direction we would go like after that, so.
Yeah, that's the plan. And one other important point I wanted to bring up too, the part of the study that we'd take kind of a higher level look at the storm sewer in town. One of the other maps I included was the water, some different water sets that drain down in town. Obviously, you know, there's water coming out the hillside from Mill Creek and Cedar Creek and everything that kind of goes through and around town. And one of Lon's big points was, well, say we solve all these INI issues, we can keep all this rainwater or groundwater out of our sanitary sewer system, what do we do with it then? So knowing whether we need to take a look at pumping a little bit more water down from the park during, when, when the levee's closed, or whether it's figuring out a new way to maybe divert water around the city in the levee or to store a little bit more water up... or to store a little bit more water upstream. We wanted to take some initial steps at looking at what we could potentially do for that too.
And if we get to something like that, I mean, not that it would make massive amount of difference during, during a high water level, but the preference would be to try to get that on the north side, because if we put it on the south side, all it's doing is running back. If we run all the water from on top of the hill to the south, it's running, it's running past us again, you know, it's like...
Right.
Which is the irony of this whole thing, we're already doing that, right? We're running it through our sewer system and then we're collecting it again and running it through the sewer system again, basically is what... According to...
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, we don't need to do that anymore than we're already doing.
Do we have any questions?
Make the centrifuge argument back.
Anyone have any specific questions for Kyle?
Um, why? Why, why should we go with all of this when like this kinda tells me we should just go with like lowest elevation and go from there?
Well, I mean, there are certainly, um, the lowest elevation is gonna be the biggest issue if it's truly related to that. But we wanna make sure that it is truly related to that. We know that there are some springs in the hillside and that might be a minor issue. Um, but I guess to start at the lowest elevation and go from there could still mean fifteen or twenty years of projects. To redo all the sanitary sewer system in all of downtown or all of the lowest areas, still a lot of sanitary sewer to take a look at or to replace. So, even just to identify maybe a stepped approach in that lower area, like saying we need to do six different projects to knock out all of the issue areas that we have, which one's the first one, what could make the biggest impact first is, um, I guess first and foremost, you don't wanna spend money on some pipes that are still new or not leaking or having issues.
Okay, and where's the main, is the main under the river? The main that goes across?
Yeah.
We're, we're, like, we're way under the river? I mean, it's not going, that's not broken, like, this isn't indicating that that's broken?
No, that broke before and then our readings over there went to zero, 'cause we just sent it all to Blakely.
Well, it's all broken water anyway, so we should probably just...
So, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, you got anything else?
I guess, uh, unless you have any other questions?
I don't think so. I, I don't, you know, I'll get back in a couple days as to what our next plan is.
Okay, sounds good.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Beautiful art here, nice work.
All right, we're here to speak before the council. All right, city administrator.
First, the core stuff, FEMA, um, we're finishing up the eighteen and now the nineteen disaster, I'll get in, uh, there's... Five, five parts of it, uh, she's got three of them done and working on the other two. The hundred and forty still seems, might actually now end up being higher, but I'll get into that here a bit later as part of the attachment to this. Sign stuff, I haven't approached anybody yet, the blacktop stuff we just dealt with tonight, town posts now will be next year's, no removal. We think we're doing okay, Bruce thinks he's got enough people lined up for the weekend, so we'll see. Allison's Park, nothing for now, Union Building, nothing for now, Boatland, nothing for now. Global Community Act, uh, we will get paid here pretty quickly from some of the various... The Pump House project, uh, we submitted as part of one of the categories for FEMA, the work that's been done to date. And the lady that was out here has processed it all and sent it up to her bosses and it sure looks like we're gonna get reimbursed for that twenty-some thousand dollars worth of work. Uh, what I've, the email that I've got attached here from her is, I guess I've got this today and it's a good sign. She's actually forwarded the roof and door repair on to the next level. So, what I'm gonna, what I'm gonna ask for tonight, if you can, I talked to Inge and the architect today, and her requirements are, if you look at the second page of that email, that, uh, we have a proposal that shows the cost per unit of, she wants wood, everything's gotta go back to the way and what, it can't be a new building kinda thing, it's gotta be replaced one for one, so basically...
But we could get it paid if we do that instead.
Right, so it's gotta be wood shingles, uh, wood fascia. The door will end up still having to be a wood sliding door, not anything you can throw in, county door opener or anything like that. And more detail on exactly how the work could all be done. I got a quote from Steve to start the thing out, and it was like seventy-five thousand dollars to do whatever. And so that, that pushed her over the threshold for what she could just approve and had to get sent on to someone, somebody else, and I didn't hear for, from her for a couple months, so I thought it might be dead. But I got this today and at least, at least it's gonna allow for, as she's saying here, we get, we get a couple quotes and we get it done directly, she'll be able to take that and submit it to whoever her hire, hire-ups are. And if they say it's good, then it's good.
That's awesome.
So, uh, so when I talked to Inge today, he said, "Yeah, get all the stuff together." What I would have him do then, 'cause another thing she's got on here is, "Please provide the historic guidelines that will be used during the repair." And the Pump House building is not on the National Register or have any, any, except that it's on our local register, whereas we have to follow our guidelines. So I, I think the plan should be or will be having Inge draw, having, having her draw the bits back and submit that to the Historic Preservation Group. And we'll use those people as our guideline expert people. And then, once we get that and they approve whatever they're gonna approve, then what? I'll get it to Steve and two or three other locals, and probably put it out in the paper to see whatever and see what kind of prices we get. And then, once we get a lowest, a lowest number, uh, submit it to Donna and see if they accept it or not.
So you need a motion?
We need a motion to do the proposal process for this project.
All right, are we looking for a motion? Got a motion here, the second.
The second.
Got a motion, second, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same side.
So, yeah, that's way better than what I thought, I mean, if we actually get, uh...
It's, it's definitely worth going like this to open the door, and so that's awesome.
Uh, let's see, pond stuff, that's actually moving along. Uh, the thing is, up there, we got those four people that got, that we need to get easements from and so, so far only two of them have signed. And, uh, we'd like to get that pond cleaned out yet this winter, but if the other two don't sign, then we're just not gonna do anything about it. Uh, water plant, we've talked about. Uh, Wingnut, I don't think he's done it, he's, he's still in the process on the cedar ridge or the cedar railing, or the one up above. Up in March, we do have the, um, presidential primary election that will be in here. So, there's stuff coming out every day, an email that I see going to Lindsay's, so there, it's new for everybody, so how we're, and we're gonna have new machines and equipment, that's how it's gonna work, I don't know for sure. The JPA, uh, there's still, we've got some bills, one tonight that needs to get approved and Lassour's got a couple that need to get approved yet. And, but hopefully, we got the auditors coming the last week of January, hopefully they'll be able to look at all the stuff and by the, in the January, we'll get it...
Have they sent their, our portion of, uh, reserve over here yet?
No, we haven't, we don't know.
Oh.
We don't know for sure exactly what it is yet, so...
Oh, correct.
So that's what I'm saying, is that, are we gonna wait till the January audit to...
For me to figure out what that is?
Uh, the electronic speed sign, I don't, I think I was, I haven't heard of anything from that guy, but I think I have Dimitri, take a look at that. Uh, Lindsay's looking at those policies that I mentioned the last time, and then at the end of the month, I got pay equity and the budget.
Did, did Exalt fix those lights?
Not all of them. Um, just had like three different workarounds coming in, and the two big ones, they did not fix.
Okay. Wanna cross the street? Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, sounds good. All right, Minister of Fire District?
It's good. We welcome Dan Ibs, he's new. Yeah, or Justin? Yes, yeah.
Cool.
And, uh, there was a, I think, right? Is there Casey Herman got, um, an EMT?
Casey and Adam.
Adam both got their EMT, Casey was the top responder for the year, seventy-eight percent.
Sweet, fantastic.
And Hart was...
It was Hart?
Yeah. Yeah. Yep, and he was second with, I don't remember, was it sixty-eight or something, I don't, I don't remember.
That's awesome, either way.
Yep, and, um...
And one dismissal?
And one dismissal, yeah. We approved that the chair of the JPA will be, he's, he's writing up that letter, so.
Okay.
And Hart also has been training, taking his training, but he's taking it in Worthington, 'cause that's where he goes to college.
Oh, okay, sounds good.
Yeah.
Cool.
It's one of the major things, we don't remember it, no, just through the budget, yeah, nothing else.
Okay, excellent, thank you. All right, Budget and Finance, is that it?
Kim and Randy, my last name?
I don't know.
No. So, everything you see here, Randy looked at before he left.
Oh, okay.
He left after an hour or so.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, closing North Sixth Street, June seventh?
Two.
Yep, okay, so this is a request from, uh, ultimately Joel King to, uh, this is Prince's birthday, so they're doing the Prince, that whole Prince weekend darn near entire metro. Um, they're doing all that thing in Music Park or whatever, and then this is the same Prince thing that we do here. Um, but he's asking to close off the street just right over here to do a concert. Um, whoa, sorry, yep, right over here.
By the park.
Yep, yep.
Just here to the...
Just, just right there.
To the alley?
Just basically...
Alley, the main street.
Yes, so, um, and it sounds like, uh, it's Chase and the Ovations are gonna do a free concert and this is being kinda spearheaded by, his name is Si something, I can't... Anyway, he's the voice of the Minnesota Lynx, if there's any Lynx fans here, um...
Yeah, if they go, if it all works out, Danny will actually be the one that'll be doing the final application, because if alcohol and whatever would be, he would, he would take care, take care of all that on his license, if that's...
So, so basically this, the ban would set up either on that side of the street or over here in the park?
No, they'd set up the street.
Everything would be in the street here.
Nothing in the city park.
Oh, just people standing there.
That's what I'm talking about.
Uh, and they thought maybe five hundred people, which, when you consider roll-ins, that's almost nothing. Um, compared to, you know, we already shut that thing down for roll-ins essentially, so...
Do you have a motion?
Uh, yeah, yeah, that'd be great, have a motion, and, uh, second?
No second.
Got a motion, second, all's in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All same side? All right. Um, oh, just kind of an update, uh, I, yes, I, um, I did talk with Senator, well, I emailed back and forth with Senator Newman and, uh, Representative Grunhagen. Um, and so, uh, Senator Newman's administrator, legislative aide, got back to me and, uh, and anyway, he says currently the, the bonding bill for Highway ninety-three that is chief offer authored by Senator Newman, and that's the Senate File seventeen twenty-eight. If anyone, uh, tracking anything. Um, and he just said if there are any other legislative drafts that have been written for Highway ninety-three, those won't be able to be entered into the legislative system until the start of the new session, the next three or four weeks. And then, um, then Glenn just got back to me, uh, and said that, yes, he, and he has the, the House copy and Senator Newman has the, the Senate one, so, so that's where that's at. Um, so continuing to work that. And then the, uh, the school, uh, district task force for facilities, they have one more meeting at the end of January. Um, I've asked for and provided as much information to that group as entirely possible. I did present to the, the, uh, school board at their meeting on January sixth in terms of what we offered. Um, I don't know, I, there's, we've done as much as we can, um, but the citizens of Henderson better show up or they're gonna lose their school, straight up.
At the task force meeting or the board meetings?
They need to talk to their school board representatives, um...
When is the next school board meeting?
I don't know, but I know the task force meeting is like January twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth. I'm gonna be gone all that week, um, at a conference, so I won't be able to be attending. Um, and that's when they're gonna be making their final recommendations. I've let the school board and the task force committee know how I feel and what I think. And ultimately, I think there's an amazing opportunity for them to do something really, really great. Um, based on the estimates that I've got, I think there's, you know, the district enrollment last year was nine hundred and fifty-five and I think there is as many as four hundred and eighteen, um, students who live in the LSH district that are doing something else. So I think the, uh, the, I have a reasonable estimate that only sixty-nine and a half percent are actually going to LSH district schools, which is, it sounds atrocious. But despite that, um, the task force, uh, members of the task force don't view that data the same way as I do. Um, I view that as a tremendous opportunity that you've had parents say, "No, we're gonna take our choice and do something different." Um, and, uh, and I'm saying if you do, you can be the first choice. Um, but, uh, member, other members of the task force look at that and say, um, whatever, they're gone. So, um, so it's, it's been a fascinating, uh, process, but, but the, uh, unless the actual residents of Henderson show up and, and let the school board members know how they feel, um, the school board will be making a, a decision without their input, so. So there you go. But anyway, and, uh, fun little fact as a part of that, the, after Saint Peter built their, their new, did their facility stuff, the next year they had a hundred and twenty-six new students, the next year, and every single graduating class was a positive gain. Every single one, not one went down, so, um, then I shared that with the task force and school board as well, so. You know, where it goes, I don't know, that's entirely up to the school board, but, uh, if anyone's got feelings about it, they should let the school board know, so. So there you go. All right, uh, financials, end of the month. Looking for a motion?
Did you figure out everything that you were looking for on that?
I didn't do anything today.
Didn't do anything?
So today, we're cater all in W2s all day.
So that is what I need, a motion right here.
It's approved.
All right, got a motion, you need a second? Got a motion, second, all's in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All the same side, all right, I'll be looking for a motion on the bills.
And while you're looking, one thing I did, I forgot to just mention, uh, when you asked me about the closeout on, or, but, I did get this from Aneta, our, our PFA lady, and basically she sent us Jasper, a letter on how this is gonna work is first of all, gonna be getting the letters and then to get forwarded to Jasper and Lassour pays them. And she's, she's okay with that, but she said I, I gotta deal directly with Henderson and then you gotta send it to...
For the duration of that PFA?
At least, at least until it gets something established here, yeah.
Three hundred and sixty for a sample pickup from Lassour?
For what?
Sample pickup?
There's gotta be some detail behind that.
For what?
Should it break out?
I think that's like multiple, that must be multiple.
I don't know, three twenty is one of them, but I don't know what the actual invoice. Credit checks?
Yeah, that's, that was, uh, whoever, whatever that officer's name was, did the, oh, sure, sure. They were doing the background, right?
Oh.
Right, okay.
That's so weird to have that in the same bill, I feel like.
Well, it's the same vendor, but, yeah, no, you're right.
Okay, so three twenty for a sample pickup?
Sample pickups, yeah.
I'm sure there's multiple pickups on that one. The little vermouths in here, ready?
It's the evolution bill for, for multiple months?
No, evolution is here, is the annual.
Okay. Okay, okay.
And Murpuck, that should be the last close, then the 8,765, and then hopefully the, and then the other were, was a past bill from October for the immediate lift case, so hopefully we're all done with them.
I'll make a motion.
Alright, got a motion, give me the second?
Second.
Motion, second, all those favors say aye?
Aye.
Hold the same sign, alright, audit something rather, let's get this informational there, they'll be here the 27th through the 29th.
Good, good. Is there ever around to call somebody in?
I won't be around, but, okay, alright, um, 2020 rates and future council salaries and election judges.
Uh, just, uh, council salaries, you change them, they don't become effective until after the next election, so they wouldn't become effective until January of 2022?
Yeah.
No, wait, wait, wait.
I value all your opinions.
When I go through the payroll, it's, it is getting a little ridiculous looking, I guess.
What's that?
When I go through the payroll and like this person's getting this much for eight hours of that, and then, like, we are getting, you know, 49 for one meeting.
Oh, yeah, what, wait, I, what they're?
She's looking at like, I think if I'm interpreting, you're saying that maybe we have somebody that's a part-time person, maybe doing some sort of maintenance thing for the city, they're making more money than in a couple hours, or, yeah, than we're making.
Oh, sure, yeah, in a couple hours.
Thank you.
I know, um. Discount this time right here. You're right, definitely limited to this, um, no, I don't, I don't.
So, you know, I don't, you know, do you like some councils just get a salary, or like you get a, you basically get a flat rate? No matter what you do, you get X amount of money, I don't know what's any better or, or worse.
I can tell you, we looked into it, and I think we even had, uh, League of Minnesota City send us a thing.
Jan, I need to hear some stuff last year.
Yeah, and that was, even our own, on our own pay was incorrect in their little document, so, anyway, I don't.
But you looked at it a little bit, right, I mean.
Well, I do compare.
Well, that was a year ago. Yes, we could probably, we're way below, way, way below, like, uh, especially Paul was like eight grand in the hole.
I know, trust me, I don't disagree with you because I know, was it North Mankato, they get like eight grand or something like that? As a council person?
People, I was like, they got like 175 a meeting.
Yeah, well, right, I mean, the township.
Yeah, so, but whatever, I don't expect to change it, I just, I just have always said I, I value people's opinions, and you should respect their time, and no one's gonna get rich, the school board had this exact same conversation, they tried to change it, and the rest of them all voted that down.
Are they gonna vote it out?
But, uh, and, and not that it makes any difference for me in terms of like it's two years down the road, is actually what we're changing for.
Changing it for the next cycle of folks that are, except for.
Yeah, that's what I mean, it won't be for me.
Changing it for you, Jan.
I mean, the question would be, okay, so let's say we raise council to 75, and mayor to 100, is that gonna cause any more people to wanna bust down these doors to be a member, I mean, I think most of us are doing this because.
I don't think anyone knew what it was when they.
I didn't, I had no idea, I, I didn't know that I got paid to do this.
I didn't think you got paid either.
So, I mean, to me, you could, to me, you could add 25 bucks to everybody, and is it gonna make us do any more or less, so it make, you know, maybe it'd make me feel like, hey, you know, the next person, like, it's a way of passing down, like, we value more of it, so.
Yeah, it's, the most interesting thing when we go to, like, when we go to the conferences is, um, being a small city, we wear so many hats, you know, like, you're checking the bills, and, you know, you come in, and that's completely free time that you do, and, um, and then we're like the least compensated too, which, I mean, this isn't gonna make, you know, it's not gonna make a difference to me, this is, you know, we're, we're elected, so, but for the next person, I think, I think it's a real eye-opener, because definitely I know we've all had people say to us, what, it's just one meeting a month, and it's like, well, no, it's, it's not.
No, and that's where I would actually be in favor of changing the quarterly thing, not the meeting thing, because then people get their minds stuck on them, you get what for a meeting, and that's really not where the time is read, you know, so, um, but, yeah, that's all.
I know it's a good way to not be, to vote and create that, that's, but, anyway.
Matter of me, so, um, I mean, that would be the only thing I would look at is, would it be more effective to just say, council members, you're gonna get 200 bucks a month, mayor, you're gonna get 300, so I'm throwing out numbers.
You know, I would think it'd be more effective, like, if you're talking in terms of efficiency, just doing, like, doing, do you have to pay per official meeting, like, is that a rule, because that's just kind of an efficiency thing in terms of like, it'd be easier for lawn to write just a quarterly check, whatever it is, than process, how many checks have you written to city council? Just because of the number of meetings every two weeks.
Keeping tracks, keeping track of meetings too, you know, just, you know, did Jim go to Murpuck or, or not, you know?
Right, would that make a difference for you?
I don't do it anymore.
Would it make a difference for?
But you know what I mean, like, is there an efficiency in saying?
Not much, because we just checked with Robin or whoever went to the meeting and say that there is a tax, but, but there is, the idea of doing it quarterly rather than a $50 a meeting, I can, I can see the purpose of the $50 a meeting is because somebody misses a couple here and there or whatever, they're, they're getting compensated for when they show up compared to to have two meetings a month, uh, but, but that, this was, I mean, this, I don't think this is maybe the dollars have changed, I don't know not much, since I've been here for however many years, you know, it's so much meeting and, and whatever, but probably the salary was not changed.
In three decades.
It's, it's, it's in 40 years, but, uh, there, there, the, the meeting might have went from 25 bucks to 50, you know, so, uh, in, in, in 40 years.
What Vanguard council passed that, you know?
Is this, uh, those gold diggers, uh, is this something that has to be decided tonight or who will be decided? It has to be decided, yeah.
It should be supposed to be, as you're supposed to only discuss the next annual meeting, so it goes into effect for the next annual meeting.
Oh, do we, do we get 200 a year? Is that what that stipend is?
Uh, a little more than 400 a year, you get 400, and he gets 525, so, you, you get 100 a quarter, he gets 125 a quarter, or 500, so 400 compared to 500.
You're welcome.
So, yeah, you could, you could change, the, the thing, where I was, where I was getting at is in 19, in the 1970s, internal control, I mean, we just started doing, I mean, I shouldn't say started, it's been a long time, but, uh, the internal controls where people are coming in and checking and doing whatever, I mean, we did, we did that in response to the auditors 10 or 12 years ago, rather than having a staff person hired, we didn't, you know, do all the checks and balances, so, so they weren't necessar, people before weren't necessarily doing, necessarily doing that.
When this pay was set, they weren't doing the extra things.
Right, they were, so the meetings they were going to, they would, they would get, and they were doing two meetings a month, so, uh, so in reality, even at 25 bucks, they were still, month on a month basis, somebody in, somebody in 1979 was taking probably a bigger end of the year check than what you guys are taking now, but, uh.
So done.
But, but, point, the point being, you know, now you guys are all on some other kind of committee, that, uh, whether it's a chamber, payroll, or whatever, that you're not, that, it's part of your volunteerism, that you're, that you're not, that, that your stipend isn't changing for, so there, there would, there would be some rationale, uh, it's not like nobody's, it's not like nobody's not on a committee, I mean, somebody's on some type of committee, that, yeah, you wouldn't pay for, for meeting, and you'd pay just so much a quarter.
Oh, okay, so if you were to apply, I'm doing the inflation calculator here, $50 in 1975, I'm going off of what you said, in 2019 would be 237, so there you go, so, I think there's some justification, I, so, I've always thought, you know, you've gotta value people, the school board is a great example, right, I watched them vicar over $5 for lunch, uh, for a lunch reimbursement for a coach versus a teacher, and there's a $5 difference, and, and by the way, this is a coach, if they only went to the state tournament, okay, so, in that off chance that one of our teams goes to the state tournament, they just, they, they debated, should we give them an extra $5 for lunch, which would only match what you would give a teacher if they went to a conference, and they voted that down, by the way, um, so there was a spirited debate of maybe saving a potential $20 a year, and I just think, I think you gotta value people's time, so you look over whether it is the city council here, or LaSueur, we're deciding multimillion dollar issues, if you think about, in a, in a 12-month span, right, we're talking about a $20 million lobbying effort for 93, the, the multimillion dollar effort on the JPA, right, and we're, you know, I know my time as mayor is I'm trying to represent even the, the facilities or whatever, if you want anyone who has a clue to sort of just be respected for their time, you have to do it somehow, and it certainly isn't gonna be with hugs and rainbows on the city council, we already know that, we just went through the chief place thing, right? Um, you know, we, we did interviews before we even got to here, you know, and it's not that it matters to me in terms of the money, the, the money doesn't matter, but it's the acknowledgement of the, the, the input and value you're providing for years to come, you know?
If, if you looked at it, I think when I first sat on the council and I thought, wow, I get, you know, 50 bucks a meeting, I guess, you know, it's not like, you're not gonna like, I think you, you told me, uh, you know, if you're on a few committees, it all pays your water bill.
It doesn't, you pay the water bill.
Correct.
Not even the cost.
Cause I checked, I double-checked your figures on that one, but you're 100% right, because we have an obligation, it's not just showing up at this table, you have to know what's going on, you could be walking out of Waggers on a Tuesday night in a hurry, and someone stops you, I guarantee all of us wanna hear what they have to say, so, it's kinda like you're, I, I, I'm, I'm in agreement, I think we should, I mean, just throw out a starter, like, if you wanna go by the per-meeting thing, 100 bucks per meeting, per council members, 150 for the mayor, would not be out of line with what you showed us last year, I guarantee it, with what, the data you got us, and I think that's even low, but, and, um, this isn't us voting for us, this is us voting for what we recognize the time we put in this year, and who's ever gonna be in the council next year, like, I know, you know, your term still goes for another three years, right, or, so, I mean, but even in that way, anybody that would look at it and ask the time that we spend doing this, or you get an email, you gotta go over the stuff, the time we spent going through the Murpuck stuff, and the stuff that's gonna be coming up with the INI, is gonna be a lot of time, and you have to be able to understand that, which means you have to sit and stop and think, and there's times where, I mean, it's kinda like a work thing, where because you have to make a hard decision there, you lay at 11:30 at night, and you can't sleep because your mind is still working on it, so, I, you know, to say that if you paid the council members 100 bucks a meeting, and the mayor 150 bucks a meeting, anybody that would say we're a bunch of gold diggers, I wouldn't be able to refute that.
I'll drag them in the file next cycle.
Only cost you two bucks, right?
That's right, you make that back right away, that first meeting.
So, I'll just throw that out there for a starter, it's essentially doubling it, but I know, based on what you're saying, that we're paying less per, because I've talked to some other folks too, and hearing what they're getting as a, basically, uh, basically as a, you know, this is how much you're gonna get paid, I do think keeping it on a per-meeting basis isn't terrible, because then you get the accountability of that, go to the meetings then, you know, go to the meetings, you don't get paid, so, I just throw that out there as a starter and a discussion point.
Well, I wish, what we've done in the past is, uh, that per-meeting is only meant at like.
Certain meetings?
Yeah, official meetings, like, that's like, these are, city council meetings are joint power meetings, the committee meetings have not counted, I mean, uh, not saying you, you can't do that if you want.
And that, that's where I would be more in favor of adding something, just on a, like, for example.
Quarterly thing?
Yeah, well, whether it be quarterly or monthly or whatever, something on that level, because most of my work is absolutely over text, phone, um, behind-the-scenes stuff, um, and so I literally only do one meeting a month, but that is a culmination of, you know, all of that, and I, and again, I'm trying to think of the next person, you know, um, and it's gonna be even harder for the next person as far as the mayor, because they're gonna, you know, right, wrong, I've been here long enough to where that's a huge learning curve for the next person, whoever it is, um, and they're gonna be spending a ton of time figuring it out, or they're gonna be screwing up a lot of stuff, one of the two, um, and, yeah.
Even at a low level, you're still, it's still not worth, you know, what I'm saying there is like, even if they are, uh, you know, screwing up everything, whatever they're getting paid for the time they're putting in, they're still not making.
Oh, right, even due to.
A huge, a huge per hourly, you're not, you're not making it, no, so, you know, what would that, you know, so then throw out, like, what would you pay for just like a quarter?
I mean, a 25% increase takes the council to 500 and the mayor to 625, but that's probably not really enough if we're gonna.
Well, I could, so, if we do this, right, and, and get it printed in the paper or wherever, and that's right to do so, by the way, people are gonna hate us, and that's fine, because then the next 40 years we'll have to put up with whatever we've done.
Yeah.
Because no one else is gonna have the stones to do it for another 30 or 40 years, I guarantee it.
And, and that being said, we've made more commitment to the water tower than we're making, you know, that's, that's 20 or 30 years, 40 years, the INI stuff, the Murpuck stuff, the money that we've been, either, you know, that's all went into that, they should hate, you know, if we screwed that up, they should hate us more than trying to, trying to pay somebody just a little bit more than the 25% increase.
You know, I would be more in favor of doing a, leaving the, the monthly, or the meeting, um, the meeting the way it is, and then taking the quarterly and making that monthly.
Can you explain a little bit more?
So, like, oh, so like 100, like, we get 100 quarterly?
Yes.
And you make it monthly instead of.
Right, because that's essentially covering your, your informal meetings, because really you're acting as an employee on the bills, you're acting as employee, like, so it's covering those other duties that as this council, even before us decided, we're not gonna hire employees, we're gonna utilize the people here, and so by doing that, because those duties are monthly, it's validating that time. You know, so that's, that's where that justification is, is going from quarterly to monthly, because those duties are all monthly, whether I'm signing paychecks, or you're reviewing bills, or you're doing payroll, um, bills and payroll take longer than some of our meetings.
Well, our personnel too, I mean.
Well, yeah, so, that's what I would recommend, is just take the quarterly and make it monthly, and leave the, the meeting thing alone, yeah.
So, just keep the money at the same, pay us 100 bucks a month?
Yep. Yep.
And it's, it's good to, it'd come out the same for me.
It's gonna come out the same for me, and like, like I said, I, I think if we're at the low end, we need to look at that, but I'm willing to go off of whatever to push the conversation, but I think it would be more efficient, and I would feel like...
Does the crowd have opinions on this? I mean, you're the public, you're the only public that showed up tonight.
That's right. We, we get over the floor, absolutely, if you have thoughts, it'd be helpful.
After coming to me, I really have an idea of understanding what all of the cabinets of our city, and that is the reason I'm continuing to come, because if you want to learn and understand, I want to, like, be the one to please the chief of the public by your, that year. I think that you earned your money personally, I have no problem with so many increases.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can speak too, did you?
I love to talk.
Okay. But that, I mean, that just seems to be the most logical thing to me, um, but that's just an idea.
I, I a hundred percent think it should just be a straight stipend, if you want to use that word, but looking forward.
Without a per-meeting?
Without a per-meeting, I just don't think that's...
I, I disagree. I, I, it, for me, like, I, I go to so many meetings that, like, if, if we, you know, like, especially when I first started, I felt like I was going to so many more meetings than some other people, and that if it was the same, I'd be kind of pissed, because I drive around so much, and it was really hard for me, especially at the beginning, to find daycare, and it was, it was a huge pain in my ass.
That is, you know, that's actually a really valid point, um, some people who want to be on the council would have to literally get daycare and pay for babysitters just to be here, so...
And I guess the other point, I guess why I wouldn't leave it at a hundred then, is, okay, so in December, the whole city, the police chief meeting alone, so we did the police chief meeting, we did our meeting, we did a MIRPUK meeting, maybe in Decem-, no, the MIRPUK meeting in December was short.
Oh, yeah, that was, yeah.
So, you know, so if we do three meetings, if there's a special council meeting, and then the committees and everything, I think we should, I, I'm still in favor of, of a stipend, but then I think we should pay more. And again, I'm not going to benefit from this, I guarantee it, I'm not running against.
Future council members thank you for it.
Right, I mean, I'm just saying, I, like, again, and I'm not doing this, if I were doing this for, for the money, um...
You're in the wrong amount of business.
I'm in the wrong business, because this, you know, so I think it's worth looking at. Min, like, for this, for us, for, so, if I could use you as an example, you go to a fire meeting, you go to a council meeting, and you go to a personnel meeting, which isn't every month, but, you know, so if, and if you throw one more on top of it, you'd be losing on this deal then.
No, I think what he's saying though is meeting and a hundred months, you're saying, leave the meeting at fifty, and make the stipend instead of a hundred quarterly, a hundred monthly.
Yeah, sorry.
So meeting plus a hundred monthly.
Sure.
So if you're fifty dollars a meeting, just like it is, is that right?
Yep.
And a hundred dollars a month?
That's right.
Which would be a hundred for everybody, or...
For all.
Yeah.
Okay, because yeah, right, yeah, right now it's a hundred a quarter and a hundred and twenty-five.
And would you get a quarter?
One twenty-five.
So you're proposing one twenty-five a month?
Yeah, that's what we do, yeah.
You okay with that?
And now, what, for the, for the meetings, would you just keep them at the city council and joint powers meetings or official ones, or would you add something else to it?
I, I am fine with...
I think the official ones are easier to track, yeah.
So what are the official, so the official ones are the fire district, the...
That's it, now, now it's down to city council, fire district, we're all, no more MIRPUK, there's, it was always a joint powers, there's no cable joint powers, you know, so that, those are the only two.
And then special meetings?
Yeah, special meetings, yeah.
Like the police chief one, uh, or the joint one with La Sure?
So, so it's basically, wait, no, I got lost, the, the fire district and what else?
City council.
City council.
You don't get park board?
Guess not.
No, no, park board's not, it's gotta, it's gotta be something that you can actually take, take action on, so act like in the park board or personnel or whatever, those are all, those are all recommended.
It's a no-brainer that, yeah, a hundred bucks plus, plus the fifty.
Yeah. And that was the rationale, that, that at the committee meetings, you can't take action, I mean, you're...
So personnel isn't either.
Right, yeah.
That's, that's like a no-brainer for me, and it should be, I mean, because what you're dealing with at a personnel committee is, can be, I've not been on this personnel committee, but, you know, when you're dealing with some heavy stuff, that's again, not a sleeper, so...
I think you should go two hundred a month.
I'm not going to disagree with you, but I ain't going to say it myself.
He's got a lot of time, you know, the congressman, what, you've got a lot of, I mean, with the flood and everything, and it's not going to stop, so I, yeah, I need to set this on me, I don't say.
And, and I, but I, and I don't see, uh, not necessarily fifty dollars, but even a stipend for committee meetings might not be a bad idea, I mean, not, maybe not...
Yeah, or do it that way?
Maybe, maybe not, maybe not fifty, but twenty or twenty-five or, or something, or something like that, you know?
Well, I, you know what, I don't, I don't think I disagree with you there, because there are a couple of committee meetings that I wish would happen more frequently, and maybe they would in the future if there was that attached to it, you know? And, and I know you're on the park board, so I don't mean this, but, like, the park board is one I wish met more regularly, and maybe that would help make that happen. And again, I'm trying to think of how past councils have behaved versus what we want.
But I think, that's, now I'm thinking, that's, that's why I would draw the line, though, is that...
Oh, then you could just start doing willy-nilly committee meetings, like, five a month?
Or...
Right.
I noticed the tiger's eyes out there.
Jim and, okay, it works fine for the personnel, because you two are the only two on there, but parks, Jim and Randy and four other people are on there, so, yeah, can, can you legitimately pay Jim and Randy twenty-five dollars?
But nobody else.
And then, and then, and then, and then...
I was personally fine without the committee, even though, even though, I will say, I've had committee meetings where I've gone there at like four, and then I'm walking home at midnight, I'm like, what the hell just happened here? And I'm like, I didn't get paid for this! And it's like, god dang it! But it's, but I, and still even with that, and I know you have worked outrageous hours for your committees too, I'm still fine with that. But definitely, like, adding that stipend to be monthly instead would definitely feel a lot better.
It would help us if it hap, was happening, so I know it would help...
The next council.
That, you know? Um, and it's okay for whoever them is, for the public to demand performance, I mean, that's the whole idea, because I, I wish we had a better, other representative groups, whether it be the school board or the city council over in La Sure, or wherever, St. Peter, I mean, we need engaged citizenry and people who are dedicated so that they're making great decisions.
And you know what, at the end of the day, after you've gone through some sort of long month, and you do get a check in the mail, you say, at least I got something, at least I got, you know, not, I don't, I don't want, again, and I don't want to seem ungrateful for that, but at least at the end of the day, when you get that check, you say, at least something came from that, so that backs up your idea, that is going to reward somebody, right?
This is going to come along.
Well, it's tax, you know, that might come up in twenty years, so let's tax some inflation on that too.
Think about that though, literally, we're talking about the amount that we're getting paid will cover one therapy session. Like, that's insane.
PTSD.
There you go.
So I'll make a motion, we do city council member a hundred dollars per month, plus fifty-dollar meeting stipend for the council and, you know, the actionable meetings, two hundred dollars a month for mayor, plus the seventy-five, is that what you get per meeting?
Everybody gets fifty.
Fifty, yeah, so make the motion.
All right, got a motion, you got a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion, a second, all those favors say aye?
Aye.
Is it all the same side?
Sorry, you didn't want to do it?
You're going to do the next part of that under, yeah?
I'm done, after this, you're in your brave beginning.
I, yeah, I took, I took one, but, yeah. They're going to vote me out. Doesn't affect me at all, so, I don't know.
The next part of the rates, do you, do you want to, does anybody want to do anything on rates for utilities?
No.
Okay?
I, I know, uh, the, I, if, if there is a rate we should address, it's water, but the reality is, is, uh, um, I think what, we're going to find out a lot here in the next couple of months, so...
And then the, the last one would be election judges are currently at twelve, we look the same or increasing?
Twelve an hour.
Twelve an hour, right?
Oh, yeah, we can leave it.
Yeah, I think that's fine too.
Okay.
That's, that's another one of those things that I would be, I'd be like, oh, I got paid for that, so, I thought that was a volunteer thing.
Okay, all right, uh, we don't need, we're not, we don't need a motion.
Don't have to do anything else.
All right, and then, um, appointments? Randy was fine with the appointments that he had, there's really no changes here, um...
Only what I added was Matt Holmquist, Matt came in one day and he's got some ideas for some stuff back here, and it's his way to be on park board.
Excellent, yeah. All right, um, then, so there's no changes.
Fine, and I think Randall hasn't been to a park board meeting, not to have that many, so Jim, James replaces Brandon all of a sudden.
Oh, oh, good, oh, okay, got you, got you, okay. All right, I'll be looking for...
I never knew I was on utility bills, what is that?
We haven't met for years.
Okay.
You only missed any meetings, good.
I was like, well, what was, what is that?
It's, we're supposed to go through every quarter and reconcile utility bills and overages and whatever, and we haven't done it, so we're going to have to do that this year.
All right, are you looking for a motion?
No, I don't like that motion.
I got a motion, you got a second?
Second.
All right, motion in a second, all those favors say aye?
Aye.
All the same side? What's the resolution twenty twenty oh one, uh, next to Randy and next to Mayor, is that supposed to be there?
Uh, oh, I'll have to get you to sign something, the bank, the bank actually needs...
Oh, so he can write that, so he can sign the checks?
Right.
If, uh, okay.
And maybe, that maybe was from last year, I don't know if I got to do that either.
No, I think he, I think he, because he signed for him, you know, it's all... Okay, all right, I'll be looking for a motion on the meeting schedule.
So when do we want to meet for park board, Lon? Should we move that, like, I feel like in the spring, like, it's not on here right now, but either in February or March, and then maybe more in the, I think, throughout the summer months.
See when Randy gets back, I think, and see.
Right, can we talk, can you put that on? Put that on for next month, because it'd be good to meet at least every other month in the summer, if not more often.
All right. I'll be looking for a motion on the meeting schedule.
I can watch that way, prove it as is.
All right, got a motion, you got a second? Motion second, all those favors say aye?
Aye.
All the same side? All right, motion adjourned.
You got a second? Oh, no, no, my mistake, my mistake, uh...
Stack this pot.
I was just, I thought we were done, but, no, what do we want to do with those two proposals? Now, we got, we got I and C and we got, uh...
Oh, uh, what was your recommendation? You met with SEH?
She met with both.
You met with both, and with you, is there a recommendation?
Um, well, the scopes are different at this point, I feel like ISG's scope is basically like helping us determine where we should begin, but, I mean, he kind of, Kyle kind of giggled when I said, I mean, according to this, we just start with the lowest elevation and go from there, like, I don't see fifteen thousand dollars saved if you ask me, but, I mean, we do need to, like, I don't know, I don't know. I, I like their analysis, their analysis is good, have you heard from SEH again?
Yeah, but I, but I told them we got another one tonight, you know, we, we'd let them know which, which, which director you want to go, if they followed up, they want to know what we're doing.
The, the...
They told them, picked anybody yet.
I do like, uh, that SEH is actually already involved in the hydrology of the valley as a part of, um, everything else we're doing, they did all that work. Now, does that provide them with unique insight that they would not have to recreate, whereas they might have to recreate?
Right. I, I like their analysis is looking good to me, SEH definitely has a, a greater toolbox, a much more elaborate toolbox to work from to actually come up with solutions for us.
Yeah, and I, and while they show up like three people instead of one, but again, the scope is a little different.
Yeah, I mean, like, for the analysis, like, I don't think this is a bad gig for the analysis of just determining where we should start, but I feel like this, I feel like this really tells us that we need to start down here, like, we, but...
And I sort of felt like we knew that, like, like Lon could put that together if we asked them, kind of a thing, you know? You just need to go on the, the website and then...
Yeah, and overlay the graphs.
Yeah, so, so while I liked it, I, I was like, no, well, this wasn't exactly that complicated, but I, it is, it is nice.
But it also doesn't tell us, to me, that doesn't tell us anymore, and I couldn't figure why, and you did ask that question, why, it's kind of like, wow.
Yeah, um...
Right, like, why, like, why, why would we pay another fifteen thousand dollars to...
So I just, I, that, that, I, I like INS, uh, and the, some of the people that have been there and worked with us, however, uh, from a, from a standpoint of, remember, one of the things that we, we said is, we don't want anyone to B-team, we need the A-team on this thing, um, and that's still true, regardless of how I feel about whether I like people or not, I, I need their, the A-team, so...
Yeah, and, and the just occasional conferencing with Chris Larson and Notre Falls, I think he was the one that came that one day when we had the issue with the, um, development, do you remember that? When they had to re-engineer Steve's development because they were going to clear cut it, and Steve hadn't known that until...
Yeah.
And then they're, so then I think, this Chris Larson, I think is who they brought him then to the next meeting, and he did, he, you know, he, yeah, he was really knowledgeable about the drainage, and he had apparently designed it.
Yeah, why do you remember that?
So I, so, but he's just going to be on council, like, he's not going to be on the...
Right.
Yeah, so...
Sounds like our team was thinking about, and these guys were thinking about it, yeah.
Brian and Kyle.
What do you think? Did you have it? All right, who's the A-team guy?
SEH is definitely A-team.
Well, there you go.
Keith, they're all in.
Chris is one, he's, he's, he's so smart about this stuff, I think.
But why wouldn't you just keep, if they're on ninety-three, why wouldn't you just keep them all?
Well, that's, that's the one benefit where I thought, I, I do agree, I think they've got the toolbox specifically set in this region already, and it's not that I don't think ISG could do it, they'd absolutely could do it, um, and it's not like we won't use them on other things either, but in terms of this, you know, we want to be A-team, if you're telling me, hey, no, it's this guy, I have no background that I bring to the table that you do to dispute that, so, because that's your, that's your...
I mean, I, I really do, and I think, um, like, Uma had some good ideas, but he hadn't actually implemented them, and, and, and then some of them were a little, a little out there, like, whereas Chris has actually done the work and seen the results, and Chris with SEH.
From, the only thing I would add that we didn't see at either spots, I mean, if you guys didn't see it, your presentation, uh, but on the SEH team, the person I would impress as much with as anybody is, uh, is, is our...
Teague.
Is, is, uh, is Jim Teague's daughter, I mean, she's on the SEH team.
Yeah, she's the one actually doing the hydrology, right?
But no, 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 this is, that's different.
That's Rachel Pickler.
This is Rachel Pickler. But there was another person that you haven't met yet. Jim, Jim's, Jim's daughter, who is their wastewater expert, and, uh, she was, she's, she knows her stuff, you know, and she's, she's not as experienced as some of these others are, but, uh, she knows Henderson as good as anybody does, I mean, you can say or whatever, I mean, she lived, she lived here just like Ryan and those others have, but I mean, she's lived here all her life too, graduated from here, you know, so...
Sounds like, sounds like we know.
I mean, but that's, but, so, I mean, there's the comparison, ISG's got a lot of locals, I mean, uh, on, on their team.
Yeah.
But, uh, but SEH has got a local as well.
Yeah, well, the local people for ISG aren't going to work on this project though.